Hafadei. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture has called to order today's Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, and the time is about 2:08 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Notice Portal on Tuesday, April 25 and Friday, April 28, 2023. Notices were also sent via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please state your name for the record-keeping purposes when you begin. So for 2 o'clock today, our one agenda item is Bill Number 97-37COR, introduced by Senator Roy A. B. Canata, an act to transfer Lot Number 106, Municipality of Inalahan, formerly known as the Inalahan Baptist Church, to the Guam Preservation Trust. This bill was introduced on April 12 and referred to the committee on April 17. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues here, beginning with our legislative secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Jesse Luhan, and Senator Telo Tydegui. In addition to the public notices, invitations to provide feedback on this bill were sent to Guam Preservation Trust, the Department of Land Management, Guam Public Library System, of course, the Inalahan Mayor, and we have received some written testimony from David Lottz and Polly Eric and GPT. All right. I'm going to, we normally begin with a statement by the sponsor, and the sponsor, Senator Canata, is not feeling well at the moment, so he did send me his statement, I'm going to read it for him. This is to introduce the bill. I'd like to acknowledge Senator Chris Duñez. Thank you, Senator. This is the sponsor's statement, written by Senator Roy Canata. Sisus masi, Madam Speaker, para inekunuk piniponin 97-37COR pau guna dia, zan sisus masi para todos hamzu imangaigi gini. Madam Speaker, the property structure identified in Bill Number 97-37 was formerly known as the Inalahan Baptist Church. This property transferred to the Guam Preservation Trust is to stabilize and restore its historical structure and will also address concerns about the hazardous state of the building and safety concerns for residents and visitors in Inalahan Village. Further, the property transfer commits GPT's efforts as a step towards preserving our valuable culture to restore, reconstruct, and rehabilitate its front façade structure while still maintaining its historical essence and venue for religious and fellowship activities. Madam Speaker, we share a common interest, which is to preserve our valuable culture and historical significance for all generations. There are stories to share about this property structure, and we can ensure will not be forgotten. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the work you and your committee extended for Bill Number 97-37COR. And for the record, there is a correction on the property description of the bill that has been confirmed by the Department of Land Management, the director's present, and I will yield to his correction. Sisus masi para inekunuk piniponin 97-37COR pau guna dia zahu dise seha na para ta kalam Before we start, I just wanted to put up some photos, if you don't mind, so that the people who are watching can relate to what we're talking about today, so if we could start this presentation. Some of this is also from the Department of Land Management, and I just, these have been also passed out in a packet to the senators that are here today. There's a certificate of title showing the government of Guam. Next slide. On the same certificate of title, it shows there may be liens on the property, which we will discuss with the Department of Land Management. Next slide. This is the map that we were sent by Land Management. So on the bottom of the map is the main Inalahan Street going towards Melesu to the right, and on the top of the map is Inalahan Bay. So the yellow portion, of course, is what we're talking about today. That's the lot. And so the bill would be to transfer the lot, the entire lot, to GPT, Guam Preservation Trust. Next slide. This is from the map, and it shows prior owner as being here. It said, this is the map done in 1985, Dr. Ernesto Espaldón, but the CT now says Government of Guam. Next slide. This is just a Google Earth kind of shot, give you a perspective. So the Baptist Church is in the blue line. The Chief Godal statue is in the white line, and Gefpago is on the red, is in the red line, and of course, the ocean is on the top. Next slide. This is, this is looking as you're exiting Inarahan, heading up to Jotniya. Okay, so the Baptist Church, the old Baptist Church is on your right. This is just for perspective. And the next, next slide. This is going south towards Melesu. Okay, next slide. Next slide. There is a sign there right now. Next slide. And here it is facing, and I just want to show you. It's not shown on the map that we have, but on the Google Photos, and of course, if you're down there, you can see that on, we're gonna find out for sure, but very close to the old church is the Chief Godal statue on your left. That's what we're looking at on the left, the Chief Godal statue, and on the right is the Gefpago facility. Okay, next slide. This is just showing its proximity to the Gefpago activities. Next slide. And then there's a road. This is where you enter, and if you're going to go into Gefpago as a tourist or a resident, this is where we enter, and I just wanted to talk about this a little later, and I wanted, so this is what I'm calling the road in the middle of Gefpago right now. Okay, all right. That's it for the slides. Senators, you have all of these in your packet. I'd like to acknowledge the presence, presence of my vice chair, Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for being here. All right, well, now here, testimony. Who shall we begin with? Mayor? Would you like to begin, or GPT? Guam Preservation Trust. Mr. Borja, if you would like to join us, anyone who wants to present testimony, please join us at the table. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the GPT members, Polly Eric and Mr. Mike Makio, the chairman, of course, our mayor, Targala from Inalahan, and the Director of Land Management, Mr. Joe Borja. Sisus masi to all of you. We'll begin with the Director of the Guam Preservation Trust.
Buenas, sen hafadei. Madam Chair, Speaker Chulahi, senators, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony for Bill 97-37COR relative to transferring the Inalahan Baptist Church and the Municipality of Inalahan to the Guam Preservation Trust. We commend the legislature for hearing this important matter and for finding the trust as a partner to address both the safety and historic preservation concerns of the village residents and the community. As you are aware, GPT's enabling legislation, Public Law 20-151 and 27-89 allows the trust to acquire title to threaten Guam properties for the preservation of their historic value through various means. Currently in Inalahan, GPT acquired a fee simple, the George Flores and the Sinicalist Houses, and a small property, Abdaden River, by donation. We intend to use these properties to tell the story and to showcase historic Inalahan and help address the needs and concerns of the village as identified in the Inalahan Historic District Revitalization Plan. Should this bill pass, this would be the first property GPT will receive by transfer. In all ways of acquiring threatened historic properties, GPT recognizes that the use of these properties must meet the needs of the residents of the village and working towards creating co-stewardships of acquired properties that harmonizes with established revitalization plan and other village plans and initiatives. In this regard, we appreciate Senator Canata for proposing this legislation as a solution to preserve and protect the Inalahan Baptist Church, particularly as we commemorate National Historic Preservation Month in May and look forward to the outcomes by this body on today's discussion from our community and stakeholders. Sisus masi.
Sisus masi. Mr. Canata. Mayor?
Good afternoon, Speaker, Senator Andrew Shelton, Senator Luhan, Senator Duñez, Senator Brown, and Senator Telo Tydegui. First of all, I'm here in support of this. It's been a long time coming. I want to say that about a year and a half ago, we've had many conversations with Shippo and likewise with Joe, and also I brought this up to Senator Telo Tydegui. So I'm very thankful that Senator Roy moved this forward. I was kind of hoping that Senator Telo was a part of this, at least a co-sponsor of this bill, because I am very happy that we've come this far. I wanted to also add that, you know, while the, this bill allows for the official transfer over to Guam Preservation Trust, I'm a little bit concerned, because that's kind of like just moving it, moving this project one inch only. I'm a little bit concerned, because I know that in conversation with Joe, Mr. Canata, that funding, you know, has been some of his challenges with regards to operating the Guam Preservation Trust. So again, with that said, I'm hoping, and I don't see it written out in the current existing bill as introduced, but perhaps maybe in a future bill that they, we do have an identified funding source, so we can accelerate this project. What I'm hoping, and I'm also asking the board of the trust, is to please really put some consideration into this. The photos that you saw with the big pago sticking out of, that has been removed, only because it was actually creating a hazard. When the wind blows, that whole tree shifts, and eventually, if it stayed that way, it will eventually fall and topple over. So we've already removed that whole vegetation there, and so I'm hoping that we can, while it stands to be a great tourist attraction, it also is a hazard, not just to our visiting tourists, but to the community as well, anybody passing by. Its proximity to the road is so close that if the wall actually falls over, it'll eventually hit a car. So again, there's multiple requests here. Hopefully, funding can be identified, hoping that the board can also make this a high priority in terms of at least putting it where it's, like I've always told, like Joe is, if I cannot tear it down, then can you help me make it safe? And that's kind of what I'm asking at this point. So again, I'm very thankful for the bill. I believe it'll do a lot of wonders. I know a lot of the old folks tell me all kinds of stories about them going there, listening from the outside, what was going on in the inside. So again, to have it restored to what it was before definitely would bring back memories and perhaps encourage them to come out and tell more stories about it. So thank you again very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Polly Eric? The chairman?
Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Makio.
Hafadei, Madam Chair, and to all the committee members and senators, thank you for entertaining us today. I'm here in support, obviously, of the proposed legisla, the proposed bill. We have been hoping and working toward some form of restoration and some form of stabilization and adaptation of the building for about 20, I'm gonna go 22 to 25 years. So you, you know, a lot of you are sick of me for bringing it up, right, every year. But again, going backward, going back in time, the, the ownership of the building has always been a challenge, because, you know, quite frankly, for the Public Library and the Department of Chomor Affairs, they were scared to touch it. And, you know, we would try to engage with them and say, hey, what if we worked together? But again, there was always this, this kind of concern that they were in over their heads. They didn't really understand what needed to be done, or the amount of effort that it would take. And so it always intimidated them. So, you know, over the years, we started to, to, to talk about a different track, where we could take ownership of it only, only as necessary for us to handle the restoration and rehabilitation work. And the other program was also to maybe talk about having some form of small business endeavor or study or analysis done, so that it can really be a cottage industry when it is returned to the village, you know, when the ownership is returned to the village. You know, there are dozens of great ideas for how this facility, how the building can be used once it's restored. And then to the mayor's point just now, I think almost as soon as we can, we plan to move towards the, the physical stabilization of the structure, you know, getting in what's necessary in terms of engineering and bracing and, and, you know, the rest of the fencing and signage, in order to make sure that it's stable while we go through the steps that we need to in order to, to really engage in the restoration of the project. So, you know, again, at the end of the day, we really do see this as becoming maybe, it has always been a benchmark building. For many people, that is the entrance to the village. And when we were doing the historic district, when it was being assigned, I mean, that was acknowledged as one of those buildings, that you immediately knew, okay, I'm in the heart of the village, because here I am. So it, it plays that very important role for, in terms of the village, but also, as we'll see with, you know, religious and historical scholars, the role that the Baptist Church played in the overall religious endeavors on the island, it's an important part of our history. It's an important part of Inalahan's history. So, you know, we're really, you're looking forward to kind of capturing all of that in this restoration process. So again, thank you for consideration of the, of the bill.
Sisus masi. Polly Eric?
Buenas, stadis. Sisus masi, no, Madam Speaker, Madam Chairperson, committee members. As you noted, I am a member of the Guam Preservation Trust Board, but I'm really here as a private citizen. And even though I'm not a Baptist, in a way, I am a Baptist, because I do baptize. But I'm here really as a lover of Guam history and the, and the people of this island. And all places of historical significance, cultural significance derive their importance from people. And it's the story of the people that made that church very important. Because when that church was built, you know, back before the war in the 1920s, when Guam was really strongly Catholic, to put a Baptist church right there in Inalahan, if that wasn't a challenge, then I don't know what was. So how that small Chamorro Baptist community in Inalahan had to negotiate through all of those social dynamics, you know, the drama that that involved, that is a very important little chapter, but it's still a chapter of the story of our people. So the building has an importance because of the people that make up that story. But the building itself is very important, because, you know, as a Catholic priest and having lost our cathedral because of the war and other church buildings because of the war, we can go back to the, the geographic location, but I can't show somebody, I can't tell my grandnieces and nephews, this was the place, this is the building. But with the Inalahan Baptist Church, you can, at least for now. But just as Pisa has its leaning tower, Inalahan has its leaning church wall. And even the leaning tower of Pisa, people are afraid that it's gonna crash, so they, they tried and do something, right? So we need to do something to keep that remaining wall up and avoid all kinds of risk to pedestrian automobile traffic, and then eventually to restore the building so that we can tell the story. And that fits in larger with the bigger picture of Inalahan itself as a historic district. So I may, I come here in support of the bill.
Sisus masi, Polly.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, Chairperson. First off, I'd like to go basically page by page, just three pages on some technical suggestions to the bill, and then I'll take any questions that the panel might have. There doesn't seem to be any problem on page one. On page two, though, where the actual lot number is mentioned, on line three, the lot number should be 106-1 Block 12. And down south, where the lot numbers are low, there is probably a 106 urban and a 106 suburban, and they would be in basically two different places. Up north, that's not a problem, because the lot numbers are up in the 5,000 series. But down south, Inalahan, Melesu, and Omatak, you do have a problem with duplicate lot numbers, but one might be urban and one might be a suburban. So the lot number just has to be refined, and also suggesting on the title to make it 106-1. There is another lot, 106-1G, which is the two-square-meter portion taken by the government for the alleyway. That's Lot Number 106-1G. And then, of course, throughout the bill, I would suggest that wherever reference is made to Lot 106, that it be changed to 106-1 Block 12, and that would be in line nine and line 10. And then we come to the enactment part of the bill. Of course, section one is the legislative findings and intent. We don't have any problem with that. In the designated use and transfer of property, there's mention of to transfer the jurisdictional authority title. I would just say to transfer title to the property, if that's what the end part of this endeavor. And to describe the property in line 12, take it from the certificate of title that we provided the committee. Section three, on line 21, page two, I believe that should be section 2107, not 2017. It's just a transposition of the lot number. I'm not sure about the section of the standing rules that it cites here. I did not have access to the standing rules before I left the office, but definitely under Chapter Two, Title II GCA, it should be section 2107 and not 2017. Similarly, on line number 24, you have two section threes. So the one on line 24 should be section four, and then on the last page, on line three of page three, that should be changed from section four to section five. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director, and thank you for in advance responding to my emails regarding the lot description. So we have the technical correct lot description evidenced by the title given to us by the Department of Land Management. Can you just clarify for us, the bill references that we're going to transfer jurisdictional authority title from Neves Flores Memorial Library, Government of Guam, to the GPT, but on the title, I don't see Neves Library, and just want to ask you, how is the Neves, Neves Flores Memorial Library associated with this property?
It was originally donated by former Senator Dr. Espaldón to the library as a, I forget what the words to use, as in consideration for the historical submission and the cultural issue with the people of Guam. All he asked for in consideration was a memorial plaque to be put on the property showing the donation by his family. Now, the, the deed actually named the Neves Flores Memorial Library transfer, but there is a public law that all properties of the library is Government of Guam, and that's how we were able to change the name on the title from the Neves Flores Memorial Library to the Government of Guam.
So would we be able to either get those documents or some document from you, so we can in our committee report also memorialize the donation, and maybe that would be part of what GPT is also going to be tasked with doing as well?
Sure, definitely.
All right. And thank you for your recommendations on the bill itself. Is this property still under lien?
You know, our records show, and it's showing on the title here, that we've included in the memorial of estates in the bottom there, the two documents, an assignment of lease rents and a real property mortgage. That mortgage is dated 1973, and it should have been paid in 1976. However, staff could not find any record of the release of that mortgage. It is common back in the 70s and the 80s that people who paid off their mortgage, they might get a release from the bank, but not know that they have to record that document. Nowadays, when there's a release of mortgage, more or less, it's the, either the bank or the title company that records that mortgage. We have been in contact, or we are getting in contact with the, I guess, successor financial company to Citibank, which is a company called Cenmar, I believe, C-E-N-M-A-R. They took up all the notes that Citibank has, and we can ask them to make sure that this is clear. But right now, today, this is what's showing on the abstract of title for this particular lot.
Okay, thank you. And so senators, that's part of your packet as well. Is this lot, the map shows, you know, the old Baptist church and then like vacant property. Is this the same lot where the Chief Godal statue is on?
I'm not sure.
Or is the statue on the same lot?
I would probably say that it might be on the same lot, seeing how big the thing is and the pictures that you saw, the proximity of the Chief Godal memorial. It might be. Lot 108, I believe, is, is owned by, by Nikomedes Pereda, at least to the record here. So, and that's the lot immediately contiguous to Lot 106, which, like I said, which is Lot 108 and 107, and then the beach area, and our records here show that Lot 108 is owned from Nikomedes. And just looking at the, the placement of the, of the, of the old Baptist church, which is right smack in the middle of the property, not knowing exactly how close, this map is not really an ass-built map, it's a real estate requirement map. An ass-built map would actually show the correct distance between the structure and the property lines. So the Chief Godal place could be on that same lot.
Okay, so, Mr. Canata, you were shaking your head. Yes, can you confirm?
With our research speaker, yeah, it is part of it.
And what about Gefpago? Because it's also on our, on our pictures that we put up, looks adjacent. Is it on the same lot?
No.
It's not? All right.
There is, there is a space between the, the Thatch House at Gefpago and, and the Baptist Church. So I believe that they have built the Thatch House within their property line.
All right. Could my staff, Tristan, could you please give Mr. Canata a copy of our packet? I want, I just wanted to look at the map there that we're using, and I had asked GPT also to send us whatever documents they have showing whatever maps they have. This has been a registered property under the registry according to your testimony? No, according to the bill?
Right.
The description in the bill, yeah, describes it as historic register number, you give deed of gift instrument number, is that the same deed of gift that we're talking about from Dr. Espaldón?
Yes, it is the same.
Okay, thanks. All right, so if you have any other map? If you look at this property map, it shows, yeah, like there, Mr. Borja, were you able to confirm the road? Okay, so on the map that we're looking at, there's an existing road going towards the shore, and it's either on the edge of this property or depending or depending where Gepagou is in relation to this. Because the other properties going south, lot 105 and lot 104. Can we put the map back up, please? The map? Thanks, I'll go back. There, thank you. So if you look south of the church and south of the yellow line, there's, it says existing dirt road. So I just wanted to confirm. So these lots, 105, lot 104, still look to be privately owned? Mr. Borja, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so Senators, all of these lots along the shore were authorized to be bought by the Government of Guam or exchanged for other property. The government was trying to obtain ownership of it, but it looks like the government did not. Is that correct, Mr. Borja? And that most of them still remain in private, as private property?
That's correct.
Thank you. So I'm just trying to confirm whether Gepagou is really on this lot or not. And there's this existing road going to the shore. So do you know where Gepagou is in relation to this road?
Not, you know, be able to go out there and point on the ground on that. I know that it's in that proximity. But whether to say that actually Gepagou and its various buildings, where it might be on that property, or the distance or the relative area on that, no.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be sure because a lot of the constituents from Inalahan over the years have talked to us about this Gepagou property. And I don't want to create any problems that we don't want, we're not intending. Is anyone able to confirm whether or not these are on the same lot or separate lots? Because it just looks like there is no other lot except for the privately owned lots, right? So I guess we'll do a little bit more research. Mayor will work with you to do that, to confirm. I'd like to confirm whether we are transferring the lot that Gepagou's on or not before we do that.
Madam Chair, historic preservation probably would require a survey, an actual survey of the property before they do anything on them.
Do you have something like that? Because the description again says it's, you've got a GSA code number, site identification number, voucher number, and a historic registry number. Do you have any surveys or anything like that that go with these?
Madam Chair, normally when the Guam Preservation Trust takes on a project, what's required is a property map. And then we go in and if we do have to survey the property, then we need to do that. In this case, I think that just for the purpose of clarification and to make sure that we don't go beyond what property that is supposed to be the Baptist church, we can actually do a survey, a land survey, to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. And we did invite the Guam Public Library. I'll follow up with them as well. Okay, but can you just, on one thing that you said, Mr. Canata, the, or no, sorry, Chairman Makio, you said, when ownership is returned to the village, maybe they could start a cottage industry on this property. What do you mean by return of ownership to the village?
It isn't our intent to own it forever. What we wanted to do was take possession of it so that we could enable the restoration of it because it's kind of a complicated process. And as I said, the public libraries.
Did you, so does GPT need title or just possession?
We were requesting the title because then we could also use the GPT funds for other elements, on other studies, other elements, maintenance and upkeep on the property. So if we just took the, I forget the other term for it, but if we took the administrative title of it, then all those other responsibilities still fall to the Government of Guam. So they would probably not happen. So that way, we could do it all at one time. We can initiate all the consultation that's necessary, hire all the contractors, enable all the permits, and we are able to execute all those documents.
If this is, well, it's already on the historic registry, does that, and you're going to make it less hazardous, will there be other restrictions on the property that the people of Inalahan should know about?
No, there won't be any restrictions. The goal really is twofold. One is safety. We want to make sure that it is safe enough for our visitors, especially our residents. And the other one really is preservation. And that is so that we can be able to, like Paulette would say, and the chairman would say, and especially the mayor, that we can tell that story. But at the same time that we have stewardship, whether it be a nonprofit, whether it be, you know, the mayor's office, some organization, the Guam Preservation Trust, we always want to be able to go in, rehabilitate, but we want to do it for a reason. And that reason is that it's functional. It becomes functional. Because when it becomes functional, then it doesn't deteriorate. People are paying attention to it. And especially, they benefit. It's a mutual benefit for the people and for the preservation community. So there is, there are processes that we have to go through. A lot of them also fringes upon the legal part of this. So if it does get transferred, the title gets transferred to the Guam Preservation Trust, then we don't have to wait for anybody else that we can be able to execute it immediately.
All right, so in your testimony, you said this would be, if the bill passed, this would be the first property GPT will receive by transfer.
Right.
But you own in Fee Simple the historic George Flores and the Sinacless houses. How were those, how did you get to own those?
Well, there's one, there are two properties that we acquire through purchase. The owners came to us. They don't have heirs that are interested in the property. They want to be able to preserve the property and what best is for the trust to own it. We just completed the architecture and engineering design work on the basis for design for both the George Flores house, that's the Get store, as well as the Sinacless house. And they're both very significant historically. The Sinacless house is where Father Duennius was tortured before he was taken to Ta'i and executed. Every year, you have a pilgrimage from the Father Duennius Memorial School that come down to pay their respect at that home. And the George Flores house is one of the first stores in Inalahan. So we acquired that. The other property at Zazen was donated to the Guam Preservation Trust.
All right, thank you. And the other properties that GPT has restored down in Inalahan, in the houses, those are still owned by the families?
Yes.
All right. Okay, thank you. Colleagues, one more thing I failed to mention earlier is that we did request a fiscal note, and they said this was administrative in nature. Okay, so we're going to begin with Senator Taitegui.
Situs Masai, Madam Speaker, and hafadei to everyone who's here. And Mr. Borja, I want to thank you for pronouncing all those southern villages correctly. Meleso, Humatac, you know, and Inalahan. I appreciate that. You know, and also, Mayor Charaglaaf, you know, we've been working on something like this for a while. We did the name change, we worked on, but I do realize your plate is full. You've done so much great things in Inalahan. I just want to, you know, acknowledge that and your staff. It's made Picas Best Village how many years in a row, Fana? So be very proud of the work that you're doing in Inalahan. And this was one of the things that you and I spoke about years ago to fix the Baptist church, find some way to preserve it. And we, there was some issues involved in that, and it has to do with the property. So I'm really glad that the speaker brought that up. Right next to the property she was talking about across the street is where I grew up, in Inalahan. And that's where the Napaties were there and also Charaglaafs were living there. So I'm really surprised, when I looked at that map, I said, that's my, you know, the Napatie side. My aunt lives there, and my uncle was there. So I'm just kind of curious how this is all panning out. That Baptist church brings so much memories for me because I used to play in it, you know, when it had all four walls and the roof was still there when I was a little girl. And so it is very important that we do something, we do it right. I am concerned, though, by transferring the whole entire, you know, the property. And I was happy to hear that it would be returned back to the village, you know. I hope it does, but I think I'd like some protection that it is for sure going to be returned back to the village, that somewhere in the legislation, it says that once this has been restored, that the title be given back to the village of Inalahan or the government, or, you know, just hopefully back to Inalahan. So you talked about other properties, okay, it was mentioned earlier. So do you have any problems with that, Mr. Canata? To put somewhere in this legislation that once the completion of the renovation is done, the restoration for the Baptist church, that it shall be returned back to the municipal council of Inalahan? Because you talked about wanting to make it a working, you know, property. And what better place than, you know, the municipal council, which, by the way, has funding every year that's coming to them, to do something like that?
Sure.
Okay, so you have no problem with that?
I have no problem.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
The only thing I would add to that is that, you know, part of the rehabilitation program is even to include collaboration with perhaps the University of Guam on doing a small business incubator plan, you know, so that we could actually talk to stakeholders, users, and set up the framework for folks to come in. Because I guess what it qualifies, it goes a little bit beyond just the restoration of the building. So in that timeframe, if you could consider that we're also trying to work with groups that will support and enable the cottage industry for the folks in Inalahan. So the timeframe might go a little bit longer than that because of that interaction, yeah?
I don't understand. Once it's been restored, then you plan on having University of Guam and other people to come into the village of Inalahan and take over that Baptist church for cottage business? I mean, that's what I'm thinking, what you said.
No, what I'm saying is that we would like to provide mentorship and guidance for cottage industries that want to set up in the village, set up a prototype so that they have a little bit of understanding about how businesses are run, what types of businesses, what the obligations are. So we've seen folks, well-meaning folks, who don't really have a good grasp of all the different obligations and requirements and types of upkeep and maintenance that are necessary. So we want to make that part of this entire process. So we're storing the building, but also kind of showing people how to own it and manage it. And if you.
Own it and manage it? Well, you know what? Inalahan has done, had made great strides. In fact, they've been selling this bread that everybody drives down from Jigo to buy this particular bread. And you've got people like Judy Flores, who's from that village as well, who's a businesswoman as well. And there are quite a bit of people in Inalahan that I think, you know, who sit on the municipal council that have that insight on moving forward. But I really think that once it's preserved, that Guam Preservation Trust, I mean, your ideas are great, but I think that the municipal council of Inalahan should have the say on who really goes, you know, works in there and starts. So I think we can make sure we protect it and preserve it for that village, you know. But I appreciate the comments, and I don't see any reason why they can't work with the University of Guam and doing those strides that you were talking about. And I'm pretty sure this village will do that. They're very, very open village. And of course, I'm biased on that. The, is there anything we can do right now, Mayor, and even the Guam Preservation Trust? Time is of the essence at this point. I'm worried about the walls coming down, even though we have those trees and wood that's been cut to put in the inside to avoid people from coming in. I understand that. But is there any kind of scaffolds that you can put up right now to kind of, you know, strengthen it? And as an architect, you probably can answer that. Is there any way we can do that until all this has been done correctly as far as the law and as far as moving it forward? Do you have that access to that kind of stuff?
Senator, yes, we can do a lot of the things that we want to do. You know, we want, the first thing really is safety. And so I know the board had taken some action so that we can be able to purchase fencing so that we can keep people out instead of trying to put stuff in the middle of the building so that people don't go in. We want to be able to fence the fences so that people don't go into the hazard area. So we've already taken some steps to look at safety. We will be taking some steps to look at stabilizing the wall so that it doesn't fall down. We've already done a lot of work in the backside so that once this transfer, because we really can't do anything unless we get permission from the owners.
Well, wouldn't you be able to get the permission from the mayor to at least go in there and, you know, provide some kind of protection to the walls other than cut up wood and putting it in the church? Is there something you can do? I mean, Guam Preservation Trust has quite a bit of funding. I've gone through your books, I've gone through your finances, and I've seen how much funding that you have. I mean, it wouldn't cost that much to provide some kind of safety right now while we're preparing for this to move forward.
Senator, we have worked, we've been working to try and get everything in place so that once we get the title, that everything rolls out.
Can you do it before the title? Because this might take a little bit longer.
It has a lot to do, the legality of it, the liability of it, and really using public funds for that. So that's why we prepared ourselves so that once we, once a title is clear, that we can be able to go in immediately. And when we say immediately, we already contacted, we already picked out the fence company that's going to be able to do that. We are looking at doing the preliminary work to try and stabilize the building.
Yeah, I think, you know, the fence is one thing, but that's not going to stop the building from crumbling any more than it is right now. And the safety is, it's not going to help when it falls onto the road. The fence is not going to stop that. So I'm just thinking something right away. If not, then I'll talk to the mayor afterwards. Maybe we can find something where we can, you know, kind of protect it now. Every day that passes, you know, the weather is a big issue. Storms are coming up. So we got to make sure we can hold as much cement that's in there or plaster. Or back in the day, it wasn't called cement, it was something else, I think polyphorebs. What is the?
Manpastoria.
Yeah. Yep. So both the trust and, okay, so we talk about having Inalahan still maintain the property, secure the walls for safety. Other than that, you know, of course, Mayor, I will ask Senator Canata, you know, I guess I didn't have the right name, Canata Canata, you know, to have this bill put out right away. But I will ask to be a co-sponsor of this and do what I can to ensure that the bill is going to get through as expeditiously as possible. But in the meantime, I think we need to find a way to protect that building right now, today, tomorrow, you know. So thank you so much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this bill.
Situs Masai, Senator Taitegui. Legislative Secretary Shelton.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today and for the information. I wanted to know what was done back in 2016. I'm looking at the GPT website, and it says that there was a, some kind of construction for the stabilization of the Inalahan Baptist Church done then. Can you speak to that, Mr. Canata?
There's been many efforts over the years. In fact, the chairman said 20 years. We've been trying to go in and look at the church in many different aspects and how we can be able to stabilize the church. But we always. But we always come to this wall of the property, who owns the property. In any work that we do, we want to make sure that we have, number one, the property owner's permission to go in and do it. And number two, that we protect the trust from liability. And that's been, we've had efforts to stabilize it over the years.
And so how was that done at that time? It was just a collaboration between the property owner, between mayor's office, between GPT?
Actually, so we do engage with engineers for various purposes. And so we have called in the engineers probably three times since that period of time to come in and take a look at, look at the facility and then give us recommendations for things that can be done. So, I mean, the short-term fixes are like things like, you know, just bracing the building and preventing it from falling over. But then also the longer-term recommendations come back from the structural engineer as well.
So at that time, there was $150,000 budget for the stabilization. Was that to put up a brace or?
It actually never happened, Senator, because we were having problems with the property owner.
Okay, so you went out for bid, but then the construction never took place since that time?
Yeah, we've had a couple of projects where we had some signatures, but we did do a check on it and find out that there are more signatures that needed to be done. In this case with the Baptist church, we were having difficulties. We visited the land, we visited land management. And as Joe pointed out, we came across many possible owners of the property. And that again gave us a red flag. So we would like this discussion and this whole effort to, once and for all, clarify the property so that we can be able to move forward.
Okay, and do you think now in 2023 compared to 2016, we're looking at a different price tag? Do you have any estimate at what the stabilization or restoration completely would cost? Okay.
I would place it at near $2 million.
All right, and what kind of time period are we looking at?
The engineering work would probably take eight to 10 months. Assume, we're looking at 60 days now for bidding and then the permitting process. And then probably a good year and a half to two years of construction. So these are, the materials that will be going into the restoration of the building aren't really, it's not the standard type of concrete that you buy at Home Depot. It's, you know, special mixes, special products that end up having to be brought to the island so that the building maintains its integrity.
So this, that's a large sum of money to restore. I mean, a very significant piece of property. I think we're all in support of the restoration and of course, the safety aspect. Will GPT be looking elsewhere for, I mean, will you need funds beyond the GPT revenues to make this happen?
Yes, Senator, where every day we do some search for funding.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Luhon.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Canata, just a couple of questions. It was asked earlier that after the restoration, that it would be, the title be getting given back to the village of Inalahan. Now, let me ask, because just previously you talked about the cost, the $2 million. The cost, $2 million possibly, if not more, based on the current prices of, of the, I guess, the materials that you're going to have to bring in because they're not available at Home Depot, all that. But let me ask this question. If the title was transferred back to Inalahan after the restoration, the restoration, would it be built to code? Would the building be built to code?
Yes, the building will be built to code. So there is, in the basket of codes that govern construction on Guam, there is something called the International Existing Building Code as well. And that's part of our basket of codes.
Okay.
So that section of the code is the one that usually applies to restoration work.
Okay.
So it is, there are the guidelines already established.
No, no, I'm just wondering, because it's just by the ocean. You know, it's just, it's right by the ocean and the typhoons, they usually hit, you know, the south very pretty bad.
Right.
And again, the continuing erosion that's happening down there. And I'm just wondering that if it was, the title returned back to the mayor's office, not that I don't want him to have it, but I don't think he has the money for the repairs. If, you know, again, natural disasters may happen. Now, in regards to title being returned back to Inalahan, would that come with an insurance policy that, that, you know, should, again, typhoons or earthquakes or whatever it may be? Although built to code, that historic preservation was, could still come in and make the necessary repairs? Or would that fall upon the municipality of Inalahan?
Senator, it would fall under both. Just the fact that it is a registered historic place, we feel responsible for it.
Okay.
But it also should be at the responsibility of whoever the title owner is.
Okay, okay.
You know, we don't have all the funds to do-
After the restoration, would it come with an insurance policy then, insurance? Or how does that, how does that work?
If we're going to give it to the owner, the owner has to insure it.
So a restored building of such, because you have to bring all this in, what would the?
Senator, that's the same requirement we place on homeowners. When we go in to restore their home, the requirement is that they have to get it insured.
Okay, get insured. So of restored facilities such as the old Baptist church, what would, again, because of the historic building and again, there's, you know, it's not just supplies that you can readily available here in Guam. Will that increase the cost of insurance then? I'm just wondering if the municipality of Inalahan can, would be able to incur the cost of insurance?
Yeah, the cost for insurance really is based on how it follows the code. We will present the design plan to the insurance company to validate that it is within code, that it can withstand so many miles of wind. And then the insurance comes in accordingly.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that if we do as such, I mean, I know even if it's not transferred, it's not going to go anywhere, it's going to stay in Inalahan.
Right.
That being said, and I just don't want if something were to happen, the continued erosion and something else needs to happen, because it's now, it's no longer part of the Preservation Trust at this point, that, you know, it's going to, you know, the bureaucratic red tape again will stifle the quick reaction that needs to happen.
Yeah, if I could say that, from an engineering standpoint, the restored building would meet all the requirements. Hydraulic pressure on the base of the building, wind load pressure, uplift pressure, all of those would be dealt with in the design. So it's insurable, but the insurance itself would be the obligation of whoever owns the property.
Okay, now, I just want to make sure that the mayor at least has allocated enough money to incur the costs of the insurance. A mayor? But yeah, no, absolutely, I'm all for that. It's just, again, the added cost that it's going to take to, you know, because it becomes, it's not the homeowner, now it becomes the municipality of Inalahan. And do you know roughly how much that will cost in maintenance then and insurance? You know, just a rough estimate that the mayor, maybe the municipality of Inalahan may be looking at on an annual basis, just a rough estimate?
Based on our experience with the Luhon House, you're going to have an insurance cost of at least $25,000.
Annually?
Annually.
Okay, and the mainten, and maintenance? And, okay, that's just insurance, right?
Right.
And that's not inclusive of maintenance?
Maintenance with the Luhon House, we go in and we do maintenance of at least $30,000 every five years.
Every five years. So $25,000 a year every five, at least, and probably even more based on the inflationary prices right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
The maintenance cost is an escalating element, so the-
Sure.
Immediately after the restoration, obviously, the building will hold together better for those, you know, first five, six, seven, eight years. And then we start to see wearing on the exterior coatings, things like that would need to come back in. So that's when that number starts to-
But my understanding, now, would it be, Mayor, and would it be, again, because it'd be a tourist attraction, would there be a entrance fee that maybe can offset some of these costs? Is that something that has been discussed?
We, that was part of the earlier discussion about kind of having those types of topics discussed as part of maybe a small business kind of mentoring program or something.
Yeah, I'm just, again, I'm concerned about, you know, the upkeep, the maintenance and whether the municipality will be able to have, you know, enough money. And if the trust will have the money to be able to do that and the mayor doesn't, maybe we can work at an MOU, because I know the building's not going to go anywhere. Maybe do an MOU that it, you know, that maintenance and insurance and all that will be incurred by the trust, because it does stay and belongs in Inalahan. And I'm worried that, again, that the cost-
No, that's a very good concern, because as long as I've been doing historic preservation, that's always been the largest challenge to, and everybody knows this in historic preservation, owning a historic property, that is the challenge, you know, maintaining it and understanding all these different needs that the building has in order for you, you know, to work with it. I mean, we're going back now, we're looking back at Merlin Cook School. So that's the third time we've been looking at a form of restoration of that building. And for what it's worth, that particular example is being cared for. So that's with the village of Balaso, and they are caring for it. But there's this other level of care that's necessary periodically. And so, you know, again, that kind of looking at it holistically. And, you know, even better if the mayor is able to find an income generating source or a job creation element that could go into that property. Maybe it's docents and training, tourists, you know, folks to be tour docents. Maybe it's that sort of an element, but something that adds to their ability to care for the building, that's-
And that's my concern, and if it'd be income generating, you know, and whether, again, it'd be enough to be able to maintain it, because it has to be a daily maintenance. It's a daily maintenance situation. You're right, by the ocean, so, you know, even if it's built to code, I mean, you know, Mother Nature is stronger than any code that man can put forth. But anyway, that's my concern. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Senator Duenas.
Sisus Monsi, Madam Chair, I just want to say thank you to Director Bora for providing the technical corrections necessary for the bill, as well as the mayor of Inalahan, Mayor Chargalov, and the entire team from GPT. A lot of great pertinent questions were asked. I just wanted to express my support for this very worthy endeavor. And another feather in the cap for Inalahan and for the people of Guam. I think you're going to be the most desired village for vacationers and others to come and visit. But I'd love to see the completion of this project. Thank you for the historical perspective, polyphorbes, and the understanding. Maybe one thing we will do is maybe reach out to the Baptist churches and see if, you know, they're interested in taking up some of the mantle with regard to this. But we'll see as that goes forward. But Madam Chair, no questions, I support the bill.
Sisus Monsi, Senator Duenas. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to all of you for coming to testify with regards to this bill. I think it's just been sad over the years to watch the deterioration, because I remember growing up as a child, it had all four walls. And then as time went on, there was a tree growing up in the middle of it. And as we see now today, the facade is there. I certainly agree with you, Father Eric, with regards to our history. I mean, it's a combination of all things good and bad. But certainly, it's important, and this particular thing, it's good to know the history. And you're right, you know, how did you have a Baptist church literally at the entrance of a village? You know, and predominantly, and certainly during that time as well, most of our people on Guam were Catholic. And so it'll be interesting to learn even more about the history of our village there and certainly the presence of the Baptist church. It was just a very small quaint Baptist church that just happened to be in the Bay of Inalahan. And we certainly want to see the restoration of it. But I did want to ask for the Preservation Trust. I mean, I know you have other projects as well. And I also wanted to inquire if your funding has been provided and returned to you so that you can work on this and other projects. And then in terms of your priority, how soon do you think you would be able to address the restoration? Or at least in the interim shore up, as Senator Tello had brought up, at least the front facade so that it doesn't collapse or fall into the, fall into the road or be, you know, be a harm to someone? Worse, you know, just to simply see the destruction of the remaining wall, the entrance way into the Baptist church? I know it's a lot of questions, but I got to say them while I can remember them.
Okay, Senator, again, when I first spoke, we looked at our two goals. One is safety and the other one is preservation. And the board have been discussing the safety part already. We will be going in to look at trying to make it a safe place, whether it be fencing to keep them out, or whether it be stabilization of the facade, the wall there. That's what we're going to do first, so that we can be able to address those goals. Then we can be able to go in and do full restoration at that point. But that's going to take, again, $2 million down the road. We do have our priorities, but this happens to be a priority that I think that the board is going to address immediately. They've been addressing it the last two board meetings. And I believe that we will take care of that Baptist church in that fashion.
Also, with regards to your funding, has your funding been restored back to the Preservation Trust?
Yes, Senator, and thank you very much.
Oh, very good, okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions, but certainly appreciate our mayor also coming down and providing testimony, because I have to tell you, we're very impressed. I'm glad I'm not a mayor and I'm not sitting next to you. You certainly, just being down there not too long ago for Senator Chris's hearing, I mean, the village looks incredibly wonderful, so continued work to you. I wish I could vote for you, but I just live a few villages away. But exceptional work, very impressed with, in such a short time. You know, in terms of just village beautification and sense of pride in our community. I mean, you certainly set a standard, so certainly appreciate all your efforts and the work that you do. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Brown. Senator Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome. Buenos, Mayor? All right, good to see you. Yeah, I'm pretty sure you could find a spot for Senator Brown in the village. But I don't know if you know, I have my Inalhan roots. I just wanted to share that my great-grandmother is, was the late Grecemo Meno Chargalov. She was a midwife, and she was the daughter of Anna Meno Krosostomo of Inalahan. So I always felt very connected with the village, especially when I stayed there. So I commend you. And I know when we had the town hall that Senator Brown had mentioned, you had talked about this idea that you had had, I want to call it like a historic boardwalk. We're starting from Bear or Squirrel Rock and all the way to Gefpago. Is this the restoration of this church, is it part of that plan?
Actually, so I did mention that we're calling it the Inalahan Experience. And yes, this restoration would definitely tie right into the whole thing. It's, and so the whole idea behind it always, you know, rather than the tourists or visitors, even our local folks, rather than just driving to the pool and then taking off, we kind of want them to stay there for an hour, two hours, even up to a whole day if they can. So by promoting different scenic spots along this route within Inalahan, we're trying to, you know, of course, again, so this restoration of this will definitely benefit the trail. So just by having this, of course, it was intended, Gefpago, then right to Chief Godal statue. But now you have the church, which is in between, obviously, it's an added stop, an added feature, an added learning opportunity for our visitors and our locals alike. So yeah, it is, I'm calling it the Inalhan Experience.
Okay, Mayor, I'll call it the Inalhan Experience then from now on. Mr. Joe, I just want to also commend you and the great work that- Mr. Joe, I just want to also commend you and the great work that you guys do at the Preservation Trust. Got a lot of good memories from my time at KUAM doing stuff with you. And I feel kinship with you, because, you know, we go to work every day in a historical building. In fact, I almost had a heart attack yesterday because we had the State of the Judiciary, and one of the court vans backed up on the curb and drove across the grass. Yeah, I almost blew a gasket just thinking about you and how, you know, I wanted to plant some trees, and they told me like, oh, Munga, you have to check Joe Kanata GPT. You can't even look at the grass without checking GPT, so, yes, sir.
I just wanted to add to this also, so what we're going to be venturing off in Inalahan is we're going to be doing a Skillsets Academy. It's literally a replica of any apprenticeship program. And I was in conversation with Mr. Kanata here. We're going to be, once these homes are restored, we actually are looking at using these homes as a potential classrooms for instructional. So, again, the idea is, you know, teach our kids electrical, air conditioning, refrigeration, plumbing and the like. And so by using these homes, this is a way for us to kind of repurpose those homes, aside from it being a place to visit and see and learn from. We're going to actually be holding instructional classes in there so that we're able to... And the idea behind it all is, I like to see the Inalahan and even neighboring villages participating in these apprenticeship-type programs, and so that when they graduate from high school, they become highly employable. And that's kind of like, of course, again, it's another way we can reuse or repurpose these historical homes that are going to be restored. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, definitely, whenever we go around the island, we always turn right by the baseball field and then go through that historic route. The kids love it with the paintings that you guys have done. But Joe, I wanted to ask, the end after the restoration is finished, are they going to, are you planning on conducting like tours of the facility the way you do with the other properties that you guys manage?
So, we are looking at having, doing co-stewardships, meaning that we can take, whether it be the community of Inalahan or even Inalahan Middle School or Inalahan Elementary School, and using these organizations and teaching them so they learn so that they become docents to these areas. And I think the same thing happened in Humatec, where we took the kids, we taught them their history. They focus on a site that they want to learn, and when there's a walking tour, they pull them in and tell them all about the story of their village. I think it would be, the Baptist church could be another alternative to coming out with that movement, where we can teach our kids about our history, and they can tell the story of their village. So it could, you know, there's so many possibilities. But the most simple one really is working with the community, working with the schools that are, teachers are really good resources. And you can use that as a learning, like the Mayor set with the academy or apprenticeship program. Use the village as a really good place-based learning, and that is very effective.
I know we keep talking about the safety issue and the leaning, the leaning wall of Inalahan. But have you done any like preliminary assessments of how, I don't want to use the term structurally sound it is, but it always reminds me of my grandma, you know, I've been driving by that wall my whole life, and I always feel like, just better don't touch it. But have you done any preliminary assessments as to just how structurally sound it is?
Yeah, we did earlier a few years ago, and we are going to go back in again to do that once we get, we get everything set, you know. We are going to go back in and do some structural assessments, because that's really the basis for us to go in and do the stabilization of the wall before we tackle the whole restoration work.
Right, thank you. Polly Eric, I wanted to ask, because we keep talking about in this hearing how important it is for not just the residents of Inalahan, but the people of Guam to know more and understand more about this little slice of history that is, you know, I mean, it is, it is, I mean, a Baptist church and predominantly Catholic island, especially in a village like Inalahan that I would say is, you know, for lack of a better term, extra Catholic. What is the history, if you could, I mean, like the super abridged version? But what is the history of the church in Inalahan, and why do you feel it's important for us to learn about it?
Because the early Baptists, which actually, before the Baptists came in 1910, it was the Congregationalists who gave up basically and left, and then the Baptists took over. That small group of 150, 200, and eventually 400 Chamoros were the first non-conformists. It was the first major, even though the numbers sound small, 400 out of a total island population of 10,000. And a lot of these families were prominent, well-placed in the government and employment. So it was, it was the first real break in the Chamoral cohesion. And so it was a lot of work on both sides, how the Catholics would deal with them and the Baptists would deal with the greater and larger Catholic community. So that's a whole rich area of study to understand how people deal with these fissures in society, and how they can get along, you know, and how they can make it work. So yeah, very interestingly, a slice of history.
That is interesting. It reminds me of when one of my mom's brothers, we've been Catholic, obviously, all our lives, but he made the decision one day to up and go try going to Iglesia de Cristo and the whole family, you know what I mean? Freaked out, so I can understand how, more significant it was historically back then, right? Were there ever, did they do baptisms in the bay?
I'm pretty sure.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I don't know for sure. I've seen pictures of river baptisms.
Wow.
And there are rivers in the south, yeah.
Thank you, Polly. Sorry, I wanted to go do like a whole PowerPoint presentation, a big talk, but I know we have another hearing. So, no further, no further questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Burnett. I wanted to ask Polly to expound on that a little bit. We do have another hearing coming up, however, but can you just clarify, are we going to, is there, how much of the building is left? We can see the wall in the photos, but how much of the building is left? Is it just that front wall, or is there more? It's only the wall? And what do you intend to do with the $2 million? Restore the wall, or are you going to recreate? Could you please explain?
With the $2 million, we will go in and do restoration work for the whole church itself.
There would be a building built?
Yes.
Okay.
But for now, we want to be able to address the safety
Of course.
of that, so stabilization of that wall is important.
Okay, so we could please, just ask all of you, if we've asked some of the questions that aren't answered, if we could try to get those answered as much as possible so we can move forward with this so that this can, this restoration can take place as soon as possible. Sidozmasi to all of you. I know that you had to put in a little extra work, but I really appreciate it. And I'm sure the sponsor does too, so on behalf of Senator Kanata, sidozmasi. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony, this oversight, this hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 3:25 PM. Sidozmasi.